Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone here this evening to the August 24, 2023 monthly meeting of your Henrico School Board. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda. Board members may have a motion, please.
I move that the school board approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Augburn. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and for our visitors. Good evening and welcome to our monthly meeting. We will begin our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. So if you would, please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would, please pause for a moment of silence. And you may be seated. And the next item is our introduction of visitors. And while we have a number of visitors here this evening, I do want to introduce the new CEO of the Henrico Education Foundation, Damon Jigetz is with us, along with members of the HEF team. If you'd please stand to be recognized. He's taken the helm subsequent to Mike Taylor. And we're just have been thrilled to have him aboard and look forward to continued strength and partnership between us. I'll tell you that earlier at our work session, we saw an updated MOU that'll be approved this evening that outlines the many ways we continue to work together. And we'll also be approving later on the agenda the first cycle of the innovative grants. And just to highlight the tremendous work of the Education Foundation, would note that this will mean accepting a grant award totaling over $70,000 for the school year. And these projects have an impact pre-K through 12, impacting 15 elementary, one middle, and each of our 11 high schools with creative projects that the Education Foundation is funding. So a big thanks to the entire Education Foundation team and a wholehearted welcome, Damon, to the new position. All right. Another round of applause. Yes, the grants, the new position, all the things. All right. The next item, we have some recognitions for the Virginia High School League Spring State Champions. So if you'll pause while the board members and I come forward, who will be assisting with the recognition?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. Tonight, we are honored to be here to recognize our 2023 Spring State Champions. Last year, Henrico County Public Schools won 10 state championships, including four in the spring, continuing our tradition of athletic excellence in the state of Virginia. Let's give all of our athletes, coaches, and a round of applause. At this time, we invite Deep Run's Principal, Dr. Brian Fellows, and Director of Student Activities, Michael Kidd, to come to the front, please. The Deep Run Boys Tennis Team won their third consecutive VHSL Class V State Title in 2023 despite losing more than half of their starters from the previous year. The team battled adversity with a new lineup, losing regular season matches for the first time since 2018. However, they improved throughout the year and gutted out three of four close matches against our in-county rival, Godwin, including the regional final and state semifinal. In addition to winning the team title, Captain Zach Fleishman and Grant Kruzdma won the double state title, Deep Run's first in over 10 years. Congratulations to the Deep Run community on this amazing recognition. Next, we invite Coach Larry Parpart and members of the 2023 Douglas Freeman Girls Tennis Team, Caroline Verteri and Lily Brooks, to come forward. The team finished the 2022-23 season with a 20-2 overall record, going undefeated in Region 5C for the second year in a row. The 2023 team won their third consecutive Region Team 5C Championship on their way to their third consecutive Class 5A State Championship. In addition, Paige Sutter won the five Region 5C Singles Championship. Paige was also selected to the Richmond Times-Dispatch First Team All-Metro Team. Ann Douglas Council and Ellie Wood were selected to the second team, and Carolyn Frank was selected to the Honorable Mention Team. Yes, this team was outstanding on the tennis court, but also out of the 15 members, they are also true examples of what scholar athlete should look like with a compiled 4.1 cumulative GPA. Let's give a big round of applause to the Freeman Tennis Team. Next, we invite Coach Christina DeAngelo and members of the 2023 Douglas Freeman Girls Lacrosse Team, Everett Garner, and Ella Post to come forward. The Freeman Girls Lacrosse Team went undefeated in Region 5C for the third year in a row. The 2023 team won their third consecutive Region 5C Championship. U.S. Lacrosse honored five of the Mavericks' All-Americans. The VHSL honored five players as All-State Players. And for the second year in a row, Freeman has the VHSL State Player of the Year, Bridget Wilson. For the second year in a row, the Richmond Times-Dispatch named Maverick Bridget Wilson as an All-Metro Player of the Year. Freeman beat Independence on June 10th, which broke school history as it completed its third consecutive 5A State Championship. Congratulations to the Douglas Freeman community. Next, we invite Glen Allen Principal, Mr. Reggie Davenport, and coaches Matt Walton, Johnson Minara, and Laura Mulholland, and the Glen Allen Girls Track Team members Ellie Velazquez, Emily Romano, and Mackenzie Blanchett. The 2023 Glen Allen Girls Outdoor Track Team won their first ever VHSL Outdoor State Championship in girls track for Henrico County School by amassing 66 points from all areas of the track-and-field program. Glen Allen was led by individual state champions Ellie Velazquez in the 3,200-meter run and Emily Romano in the pole vault, both of whom are here tonight celebrating their individual state championships. Helping support the team in their 66 total points in the relays, the team of Avery Biak, Caleb Bolton, Reagan Walters, and Ellie Velazquez garnered the 4x800-meter state title. Glen Allen also earned points from Cameron Whitby in the 400, Avery Biak in the 16 and 3,200, Kate Pietro in the 3,200, Ellie Velazquez in the 1,600, and Morgan Pietro and Maddie Walsh in the pole vault. Mackenzie Blanchett, who is also here tonight, also placed in the discus and the shot put. Huge congratulations to the Glen Allen Girls Track Team on the first-ever state championship in girls track in Henrico County. Okay. Lastly, we would like to invite Deep Run's Principal, Dr. Brian Fellows, and Director of Student Activities, Michael Kidd, to come forward one last time tonight. Deep Run High School also won the 2022-23 Virginia High School League National Guard Cup in the Virginia High School League Class V. This is the second straight and fifth time in six years that Deep Run has won this prestigious honor. The National Guard Cup is the highest award given by the VHSL. It goes to the school in each classification that has achieved the best overall record in VHSL state competition in 27 total sports. The cup represents the state champion's state champion. Congratulations to Dr. Fellows, Mr. Kidd, and all of the Deep Run High School community on this well-deserved honor. I'm also proud to note that five of Henrico's nine high schools placed in the top 19 of the 5A standings, highlighting the amazing accomplishments of all of our HCPS athletic programs in the 2022-23 school year. Let's give them and all of our students, coaches, administrators, parents, and community members a big round of applause. We would like to thank everybody for your support tonight. And members of the board, thank you all for your support.
Congratulations again to all of our winners. All right. So now it is time for our Henrico Highlight. And so as we are wrapping up the first week of school, I want to thank our students, our families, and our incredible Henrico County Public Schools staff for an amazing first four days. As I have visited schools, I have seen so many smiles and hugs and relationship-building and, of course, learning. Tonight's Henrico Highlight captures how our students and employees spent the first day of school.
So nice to see you. You ready for the new year? Hello. Hi.
2022, do not get there. All right, have a good day.
Yeah, happy birthday, school. Have a good day.
You ready for a brand new school year?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. Are you ready for the school year?
I miss you so much.
How are you? You're doing?
I got beautiful dress.
Thank you.
That's so good.
There you go. There you go.
Welcome to the corner. She's coming in here, okay?
Good morning. Have a great day, okay?
Good morning, guys. Make sure we just breakfast.
It's so good to see you guys.
Welcome back.
All the way down to the back of the table.
Morning, good morning. Happy birthday.
Good morning. Everyone say to the right, "Good morning, good morning."
You ready for your birthday? We are ready for you.
Good morning, thank you.
Junior year.
Good morning.
All right, everybody. Do it, yes.
Hey, guys.
My friend, how are you?
Hi. Thank you, 2024.
And that is just a snapshot of all the back-to-school excitement experienced across our county. And as you know, the fantastic start of the school year is due in large part to our phenomenal teachers, who are the heart of Henrico. Tonight, I am happy to introduce you to a few of our first-year teachers who have joined the Henrico County Public Schools family this year.
Me. I feel like teachers are superheroes. And I just wanted to join the team of superheroes and contribute to making kids want to come to school, making them excited to come to school and everything.
So what would this be, Bradley?
I am a Glen Allen Elementary alumni. This is where I really wanted to become a teacher. The first day after kindergarten, I told my mom I wanted to be a teacher. And then here I am, 17 years later, I'm a teacher here.
Ben, ten.
Ten.
Good.
So I see some middle. That's okay. Kind of the reason why I chose Highlands Springs is because I was here last year for my student teaching. I've met so many nice people. And I can see that we're all here for like, I guess we all have our whys. We're all here to help and help teach, you know, like bring up the next generation.
And knocking out history or English.
I want you guys thinking a little bit first before we create them.
But I am very eager and excited to get to know my students because I plan my lessons and things that I do around my class and what they enjoy and what they like, so that coming to my classroom will be enjoyable for them.
All the information for the school year is in this packet for you guys.
Good thinking. I like that, Jordan. That's so smart. Go ahead, add on the arm.
I've always had a passion for kindergarten. I actually did my student teaching here at Harvey Elementary School with kindergarten. So that's when my passion for teaching kindergarten grew.
This is amazing.
It's amazing.
I like the younger ones. I like seeing their mind grow, teaching them and watching their mind expand.
Okay. Good job.
Y'all are doing a really nice job. Thank you.
It was great to get to meet the kids and finally put some basis to the names. I love working with kids, and I had really great teachers growing up. So I wanted to be able to give back to the next generation of kids.
So cross it off. Good to chat with you. Actually, I just want to honk it.
It's been great. I really like Henrico County. Like, and I feel at home since I grew up here and I went to these Henrico schools.
I grew up in a family with a bunch of teachers, but really, this school brought a lot of just warmth and welcoming.
So kind of just realizing that I'm on my own this time, but I still got a great team of other teachers in the building that are here to help me out with whatever I need.
Such a warm welcome to our new teachers. And we'll continue to check in on these first-year teachers and others throughout the year and bring you updates from their classrooms. Madam Chair, that completes the Henrico Highlights for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cashwell. Next on the agenda this evening is the reading of the HCPS Mission Statement. Reverend Cooper, will you do the honors, please?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence with, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you very much. The next item, then, is our public forum portion. And there are four members, there are four speakers signed up this evening. This is the time when citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given three minutes to address the school board. Speakers will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up and may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone, clearly state your name and school affiliation, if it's applicable, and the subject of your remarks before speaking. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart near the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, not the audience, and they provide copies of their remarks to the school board clerk. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time this evening, there's a time keeper up on the screen to help you manage the time, should you go over your time. However, myself as chair will let you know your time has expired. Please know the school board is here tonight to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during this part of the public forum. However, a Henrico team member will follow up with each speaker. Stakeholders also had the opportunity to provide written comments through an online form in advance of this meeting. Those comments are shared with school board members prior to the meeting and posted online in board docs. Equal consideration and attention will be given to both written and in-person comments. We really do appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing your input. The first speaker is Speaker Number One.
Good evening. My name is LeAnn Luskin. I use she/her pronouns. I am here as a parent in Henrico County and also as a religious leader. I serve the children, youth, and families at First Unitarian Universalist Church of Richmond. My concern here this evening is the 2023 model policies as put forth by Governor Youngkin and the Virginia Department of Education. In preparing my remarks for tonight, I was lamenting before I came that I only have three minutes to speak about this hugely important concern of mine. So I consulted the wisdom of my 11-year-old, as I often do. My child happens to be non-binary. And I asked them what they thought was really important that I should make sure I relay to all of you. And they want to remind us that not all kids, not all students, come from homes where it is safe to come out to their grownups. And so getting paperwork signed and forms on file to affirm their gender identity just isn't going to work. So thanks, shout out to Simon Luskin for that wisdom. What my 11-year-old does not know about, but I do, are the serious and tragic risks to the mental health and the well-being of trans and non-binary youth when they are not affirmed by the adults in their lives. So when these kids don't have the option to come out because their homes aren't safe and they don't have the correct paperwork on file at school, they stay in the closet and they suffer. And so I'm here to urge you to reject these model policies. Simon thought it was just fine, the ones that were in place before. So I urge us to really consider what this means for trans and non-binary youth. Keep the policies that are already in place. Henrico County would not be the only school district in the state to reject these policies. Richmond Public Schools came out right away in opposition to them. Fairfax County, Prince William County. And I urge us to do the same. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Speaker Number Two.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Lawrence, and I am here to speak on the model policies as well. And my pronouns are she/her. I have been a resident of Henrico County for 22 years. My two children, who are now successful adults, are products of Henrico County Public Schools. And I'm a retired high school math teacher with 27 years of experience in Henrico County. I continue to serve our youth as a tutor for Code RVA and as an advisor to my church youth group. I am very fortunate to know, love, and support several transgender students through my work. It is because of these lovely, talented, beautiful, brave teens that I am here today to urge you to reject the proposed model policies. These policies will cause harm to an already vulnerable population of students. The model policies are based on fear and division and do not fit in with our four cornerstone right up there. They do not model the growth mindset that we want to nurture in our students. And as a reminder, I just jotted down the safety and wellness statement from the four corners up there. Building an equitable and an inclusive school climate that provides for the social, emotional, cultural, and physical wellness of all stakeholders. The model policies will go against our goal of building an equitable and inclusive school environment. As I mentioned, I am a math teacher, and math is a difficult subject. And as a tutor and teacher, it is my job to create positive relationships with students where they feel safe to make mistakes and learn. It's part of having that growth mindset. Getting to know my students' preferred names and pronouns and allowing them to use the bathroom of their choice is a small part of building trust and a very important one. If I had a student who was unable to be their authentic self with me, how could I even begin to teach them calculus? All of the transgender youth I know have struggled with depression and anxiety, some with self-harm and even suicide. Thankfully, they have loving, supportive families with a community that supports them. Consider the transgender teen who lives with an anti-transgender family. Where will they get the support they need if we create these unnecessary barriers? If you approve the model policies, it will cause harm. Rejecting them will not harm anyone. Please reject these model policies that sow fear and division amongst our students and communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker this evening is Speaker Number Three.
Thank you. The diagnosis of gender dysphoria has become of epidemic proportions in recent times. In the UK, the Health Service has shown a 4,400% increase in the diagnosis. Experts in the US describe it as social contagion fueled by social media, peer pressure, and progressive schools. They include, we have 21 elementary school libraries containing books that encourage the grooming of our children age three and up. Some of these books are similar to a teddy bear named Thomas who wants to become Tilly. Removal of books is an arduous process, one at a time, triggering a process of review and committee action for each and every individual complaint. I know not a single Henrico County librarian, and I'm sure they are dedicated and sincere. History is important. This gender epidemic began in 1967 with the teachings of a Hopkins psychiatrist, Dr. John Money. His work has now been completely debunked, but not before it became and remains the dogma of the medical establishment. The rationale for the early medical and surgical mutilation of children even less than 10 years old comes from a study called the Dutch Protocol, which has now become completely disavowed by its authors as being inappropriate for its current use. Suicide prevention has been used as a reason for early treatment, yet post-transitional suicide rates are 19 times higher than non-trans. UK, France, Belgium, Sweden, Finland, Australia, and New Zealand have banned trans treatment for minors. 91% of 10-year-olds believe gender is separate from biology, and 1 in 5 girls in our high schools believe they should be boys. I would therefore request the following new policy to protect our children. No book containing content regarding gender or any age or development inappropriate sexual content be allowed in Henrico County Elementary School libraries or in classroom instruction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker this evening is Speaker Number Four. Speaker Number Four. Thank you all for coming out this evening to speak to the school board. We appreciate you taking the time to come and speak to us. The next item on the agenda is the approval of consent items. Board members, are there any requests that an item be separated for school board discussion and/or individual action? Hearing none, may I have a motion, please, to approve Consent Items 8.01 through 8.09?
I move that the school board accept, approve, and/or award Items 8.01 through 8.09 on the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, for the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Items 8.01 through 8.09 on the consent agenda have been approved. The next item on the agenda this evening is unfinished business. Board members, do we have any unfinished business? Hearing none, is there any new business to discuss this evening? Hearing none, the last item on our agenda this evening is the announcement of our next meeting date. The school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, September 14, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. Please note, this meeting time may be adjusted as needed. Please note, this meeting time may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.